The time is 6:30. We'll call the school board meeting to order and have roll call, please.
Deit.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Frisby.
Yes.
Maycomber.
Here.
Wintering.
Here.
All present and accounted for. Agenda item one, the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes or additions? Dr. Cox?
No changes.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve the agenda. I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Maycomber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisby?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carried five to zero. Agenda item two is to welcome the visitors and ask for public comment. As we begin our agenda tonight, I'll explain our process for public comment. The board will hear comments from the public in conjunction with each agenda item using a structured process. As board president, I will ask for comments when we reach that item on the agenda. You will be asked to approach the microphone, state your name, and limit your comments to two minutes. At this time, I invite any member of the audience to step up to the microphone with comments about items of interest or concern that do not appear on tonight's agenda. Please begin by stating your name and contact information. It would be appreciated if you would limit your comments to two minutes so that we can keep the meeting moving in a timely fashion and allow others an opportunity to speak, as well as allowing the board to complete the full board agenda in a timely manner. Comments from the public are limited to matters within the board's authority. Please understand that we, as a board, cannot discuss items not already on the agenda. Iowa sunshine law prohibits us from having a discussion without the proper notice to all of the school district community that the issue would be discussed at tonight's board meeting. Also, please remember, you are making comments in a public meeting. Should you make comments that the subject of the comments considers to be inflammatory or libelous, you, as an individual, may be subject to legal action brought by the subject of your comments. Thank you for your support of our school district. Are there any comments from the public at this time?
I'll try to make sure that I'm exactly at two minutes. My name's Rob Pittman. I'm a teacher at Charles City High School. I had an experience two weeks ago. My family went to Casper, Wyoming for a funeral. While we were there, my wife's aunts are occupational therapists in school districts. We mentioned a easy problem with spelling for one of our children, and right away, she gave off three separate ideas. And when I think of occupational therapists, I think of people who are working with, you know, our level-three special needs kids that are having a hard time. And I was like, whoa, is this what occupational therapists do? And I experimented with my oldest daughter, and I said, you know, let's try this theory your aunt gave. We did it, and her spelling score went from, her first practice test was like four out of 20, to then, the week that I did this experiment, it went to 13 out of 20. On my own, I did some research where I looked at, you know, how much does Iowa use occupational therapists? And we are one of the lower ones. And I just wanted to maybe put a bug out to you guys and to the administrators, as this might be a resource where we could think of, like, addressing students in more of an elementary manner, whether it's fidgeting, handwriting skills. There are tons of things that occupational therapists do that go beyond that basic thing of, you know, how do we get a kid to be able to grasp before. They can go to the point of, like, their behaviors, making small corrections, doing things. There's just tons that I have no idea about. Whether it might be something where we're like, hey, you know, on these off days, we're going to have our aides do, like, a two-day crash course in occupational therapy, whether, you know, there's a possibility of just calling in on the AEA and saying, hey, is there more that you guys could do? What are the possibilities as a thing that we could explore to maybe address some things so that when a student is at the high school, they have, they can correct things? You know, I can look at a student's writing and be like, that's a first grader when they're in 10th grade.
Thank you.
And make those things. Cool.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Any other comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll move on to agenda item three, comments by board members and superintendent. We'll start off, as usual, with Dr. Cox.
Thank you. Last Monday, I returned from my Fulbright City of Buenos Aires Administrator Exchange. It was amazing. And at the December 14th board meeting, I will give a formal presentation about the experience. Last week was American Education Week. As I mentioned in my Wednesday podcast, I encourage the public to thank a teacher, a support staff member, a substitute teacher, a coach for the work that they do. Public support of our schools can make all the difference. Tomorrow, excuse me, Wednesday, students are on Thanksgiving break, and teachers will be engaged in their fourth full-day professional learning as part of our investment in their professional growth this year. I want to congratulate Mrs. Bailey, Mrs. Holob, and Mrs. Sullivan, and our seventh-grade students for taking part in the Iowa Association of School Boards Convention last Thursday. We had a crowd of somewhere between 125 and 150 board members, superintendents, guests, and media present as our teachers and students engaged in a learning activity in the mock-up of the Future Learning Studio space that we're going to have. And we received really just a whole bunch of positive comments about both our class, both of our classroom of the Future presentations that we did morning and afternoon that day. And then finally, there is one school board in the entire state of Iowa, so 336 school districts, one school board can proudly say that 100% of their board members and their superintendent earned both the individual and the team Better Boardsmanship Awards of Achievement in 2014-15, and that would be Charles City.
Wow.
Woo-hoo!
Congratulations, everyone.
One.
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 In the whole state.
That's pretty impressive.
Very impressive. Other districts had, you know, 75 or 80%, but no one else had all board members achieve individual and the team award.
We're doing it next year, too.
So.
Yeah, we're a long ways close. We're very close to.
We're on our way.
Yeah, we're definitely helpful, Liam.
Thank you for those wonderful words. Anyone else have comments from the board?
I wanted to share an update. Kind of ties into the grade alike thing, but I've noticed, you know, my second-grade son seems to continually come home and talk about his friends that are names that I don't recognize and that aren't, haven't been his friends in the past. Well, what I've learned is that a number of them are kids that he wouldn't be going to school with this year had we not gone to grade alike and that would have been attending Lincoln versus Washington. I thought that's been a really cool experience for him, that some of his good friends, now that he's playing with the recess a lot, are kids that he would never have had that opportunity had we not made that change this year. One of the positives, I think, that we anticipated, but is now validated.
Very good.
Well, I can't let this opportunity pass us by because, my goodness, after going to that convention, and Scott, you and I and Dr. Cox were part of that Classroom of the Future presentation and.
We have more of that in the next agenda.
It's an agenda item.
Oh, should we wait until then?
Yep.
Oh, it is.
Yep.
Oh, I forgot.
You're fine.
I'm sorry. My apologies. I can't wait.
Jim has something, I think.
Go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to say that I got a letter from the chairman of the Board of Supervisors that tomorrow night at 4 o'clock, we're having a conference board meeting to look into hiring a new assessor.
Oh.
Oh.
They had, they've had a committee appointed, and they've eliminated it down to one. We're just going to see if we can approve it or not.
Very good.
He retired, didn't he?
Yeah, he's retired.
I was going to announce that had received an invitation from two students in the technical writing class at the high school, and excuse me if I don't get the names correct, Anna Calixtrow and Samantha Lensing. They had originally set up to have a presentation last Wednesday on allowing peanut products back in the school. Since it was, Jim was the only board member here, they had postponed it until Friday morning at 9:05. So, I was able to go Friday morning after spending two and a half days in Des Moines and observe their presentation. They had a lot of good things to say about why we should allow peanut products back into the district. It's also my understanding that a number of high school students have been doing speeches and presentations on that topic this fall, and trying to get a couple of them to come give us their perspective at the board table. Not sure if that'll happen, but if they have an opinion, I think they should, at least a couple of them should be heard. So, we'll see if we can make that happen before the Policy Review Committee brings that back for discussion. So.
Very good.
Agenda item four, the ISAB convention. Let's.
So, Justin's going to put up a slideshow here, a picture that will sort of capture what took place in Des Moines. And then, board members, just feel free to chime in and share anecdotes, positive experiences about what took place at the convention November 19.
How did your meeting go Wednesday morning?
Very well. We have, for the delegate assembly, as far as what the legislative priorities and resolutions were, ISAB has 33 total legislative resolutions that were proposed. All the ones that we had sent forth made it to that cut. The four that were top priorities, I have a list of those. If any of you are interested, they're also on the ISAB website. They're basically the standards and accountability, school funding policy, supplemental state aid, and the state penny. Those are pretty much the ones that they were last year and the year before, but there's been a lot of word change, a lot of phrases to make them a little more, maybe, we can get somewhere with them. But I'll briefly say that the legislative, these legislative priorities are set by all the school districts so that we have one voice, and we can all be, our grassroots advocacy efforts can be honed in on these four issues to try to get things passed.
Thank you. And then, in the morning, Jason and Lorraine and I went to another workshop. Anybody want to talk about that?
Oh, about a two-and-a-half-hour session, and the, kind of, the core topic was building good board culture and also general culture within your community, and how the district and the people that represent our district fit into that, which I thought was, it was, there was a few nice pieces of information, but, boy, a lot of it was stuff that we already talked about, whether it was even some of the stuff that we talked about in the mission and visioning thing that we did a couple of weeks ago. We had a number of those things that we talked about. Otherwise, a lot of the at-the-table ISB sessions we've done hit on a lot of that stuff, but it was a great reminder of, you know, how to, how to really look at some of this and how your role fits into the bigger picture of the community and the message that you send by being a representative on the school board. It was a really good thing. They had some really neat stories from other districts, and that's typically my favorite part of the convention, is not necessarily the scripted presentations, but the interaction between the other districts, either school boards or superintendents or whoever, running into past colleagues of other administrators to get, you know, any kinds of information we can get on them. That's always a nice, nice, nice piece of it, but otherwise, it was just great, great information.
And that presentation was mainly run by Sam Miller, the new chief administrator of our AEA 267. And we had talked about how great of a presentation it was. It was a two-and-a-half hour. A lot of it was based upon what he had done at Solon before he came to the AEA. Did talk to him a little bit and ask him if he could potentially cut that down to an hour and come up here and give it to us as well. So, if possible, he'll be in touch, and maybe we can set that up.
He already was in touch on Friday.
There you go.
On a separate issue, and I, I mentioned that.
Okay. So, it was very good.
Yeah.
Discussion and conversation.
And it was he and his former board president in Solon?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Who led the session?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. A lot of things that they talked about might be beneficial for us and, and our community. So, that's why we're kind of thinking of have him come up here sometime for a workshop, cut it down to an hour, videotape it, put it on TV, and let people have an opportunity to see and hear what other people think about the board's role in building a positive school culture, not only in the district but in the community. So.
There's a lot of great information that community members would.
Yes.
Value seeing that type of presentation, not just board members.
Right.
From the way you spoke, I would love to have that opportunity, too.
It was a refreshing exchange, you know, among board members. It's always, my favorite part, too, is just the conversations and the things you learn about other school districts and other perspectives of other board members. An interesting thing, though, that happened at this meeting, though, was because of so many of the things that we've been doing in our district and folks at the state level and within the convention knew about. You know, I'm sure you all had people stopping you every chance, you know, waiting for the elevator, coming down the stairs, washing your hands in the restroom. What are you doing in Charles City, and how did you get to this point? And, and so, it was really exciting to share with folks all the things that we've got going on.
Thought I was going to be late for lunch on Thursday because I got stopped so many times.
Yes.
I wish there was a way to bottle that up or to just somehow bring that back, the excitement that we experienced down there. And the questions we received from people from other school districts, other board members, other administration, the engaging conversations of praise, just saying, thank you for taking and doing what you're doing. And then, when our students arrived, oh, that, lots of congratulations, lots of, your students are awesome. Everyone was so impressed with how the students were and how that, that whole activity went that day. It was, it was pretty cool.
It was electric.
It was, I don't know if.
You know, you could just feel that excitement the minute they stepped into that convention hall. And it wasn't just because they were just a bunch of seventh-grade, you know, wiggly kids, but they were just so excited to see that space. They couldn't wait to explore it. And.
And what happened when they started to?
Oh, my gosh. You know, I happened to be standing by Sam Johnson, and who you might remember is the lead architect, and I was, I had a view of the camp space and the cave space. And immediately, I saw a bunch of boys run into the camp space and a bunch of girls run into the cave space. And I said, Sam, did you see what just happened there? And he said, yep, they've got it all figured out already. That's technology, and that's social. You know? And so, you know, they, you know, the comments from the kids, you know, one gal in the cave space, she said, I could sit in here all day and read. And the boys, they just couldn't make those chairs, you know, tinker around enough. And they were, they were ready to just, you know, hunker down and stay there for the day and, and get engaged in whatever their, their project was that they were working on.
And your total reaction at that moment was?
Oh, gosh. I'll admit, I was overcome with emotion. I became a blubbering baby at that time because we've all worked on this for so long, and to see those kids, it's for them. Don't make me cry again.
No, because I'll have to do now what I did then and say, walk away from me before you make me in the same emotional blubbering as you are. And you did.
It was touching.
There was, it was, for me, was a lot of validation that what we're doing and where we're going is absolutely, without a doubt, the right way to be going. Not only from watching the students and the teachers and watching people come through, but then again, the comments from the educators and the school board members saying, you know, they would bring up things I hadn't even thought of, but the possibilities of this type of a learning situation and what we're doing in the future for our children. So, Charles City, you were the spotlight in Des Moines, Iowa, at the ISAB convention. Absolutely. It was Charles City Day that Thursday.
Absolutely. And I think all those keynote speakers, whether it be morning, afternoon, or lunch, the things they were talking about, I feel as though we're there in a lot of cases, that we're ahead of the curve. You know, that one presentation, he said, ask your board these three questions. If you can answer yes to these three questions, but you probably can't, it's probably no for all of you. Well, I didn't feel that way.
No.
You know, so, we, we're, we, I'm very proud of all of us. We've been working very hard, and it's showing.
Plus, based upon the comments I heard from other board members, not just from Northeast Iowa and superintendents from around the state, we're going to be busy next school year giving tours of this new facility on a regular basis.
Yes.
You heard the same.
I agree. I took some good-natured ribbing about the fact that we were so out there at the convention, but I enjoyed that. I enjoy the fact that we are putting ourselves in a position to say, this is what we think is right, and, and we're going to lead, we're not going to sit back and follow. So, the, the good-natured teasing, it was, it was welcome. I hope the, the pictures play, Justin, as, as at least part of this dialogue is taking place on Channel 4, because there are so many great shots that you've captured here. And I want to publicly thank Justin for capturing this, for us, for media outlets, for having KCCI, Channel 8, out of Des Moines, present. One of the pictures there is of an interview taking place, and it ran for about a minute on KCCI. Channel 13 WHO TV, not to be outdone, also showed up, ran a 30-second clip from the Classroom of the Future. So, I don't know where WOI was, but the two big hitters in Des Moines had this thing covered. And, you know, there's an incredible value in that as well for us up here in North Iowa, that this is gaining traction on a statewide basis. The student reaction that Lorraine talked about, again, just, you can't capture the excitement and the energy that those kids exhibited, just sort of intuitively, floating in and out. The lesson that they did, again, Dana, Brenda, Julie, fantastic job with our students at that session. I know that there were countless, countless hours of preparation on their part to put this all together. And so, I want to make sure publicly that we acknowledge that they just really nailed a home run many times over with this. We did a presentation in the morning that was very historical about how did this come to be? Scott, Lorraine, me, and the two architects, about 125 to 150 people present. They set more chairs up at the end of that presentation to get ready for the 2 o'clock, because there were so many people standing behind where all the chairs were, that they wanted to give more people a chance to sit down. And I didn't know at the 2 o'clock session, because it really was a laboratory session of, come look and watch as our kids and teachers are engaging in this environment, who would really show up? But the crowd was every bit as big at 2 o'clock as it had been at 11. So, it just was really electrifying. And the session that we've not talked about yet is the advocacy one that Robin and Jason and Justin and I did. I had a superintendent from our area tell me, hey, that was the best session at the conference that I attended. And I said, no, really, we just kind of shared a couple of ideas. And he said, no, that was spot-on. You all had concrete examples. You had great advice. Just the whole presentation was so well put together that your board members, you all need to know that. So, from the advocacy part, because we did a lot from last December through the whole, you know, spring session, and then shared what we did that worked and some lessons that we learned, that was every bit as important in Des Moines for other school board members as the Classroom of the Future was. So, I just walked away really pleased at where we are and the future that's ahead of us. And as Scott mentioned, I hadn't really thought through that part of it, that, you know, next August, we move in, and then we're embracing the new space. I forgot about the fact that people are going to be knocking down the door saying, when can we come visit? And we're going to have to be intentional about limiting access so that just we can get used to the space and our kids, and we can get into a routine before we start interrupting with outside people wanting to come in from other districts to take notes and take back ideas.
Well.
Yeah.
I was almost late for lunch because three people stopped me to ask me that question on the way to lunch.
Sure.
And then, when we go back, I got stopped by three more people from different districts asking me the same thing. When are you moving in? When can we come visit?
It was intense. And I really think that, that there might be some value in having an ISAB day at Charles City Middle School, you know, where you invite the school boards across the state, let them all come on one day. And me, that won't happen. They're still going to trickle in. But why not make it a day of celebration and invite them all to come?
We can at least have an ISB district meeting here.
Absolutely.
Versus New Hampton or somewhere else.
Because even though we say that, we're proud that we were asked. Definitely, for anybody watching this, or teachers, or any support staff to get wind of this, we're not going to open up the doors, like Dr. Cox said, and just let people just.
No.
This isn't going to become the museum of touring. And it's going to be real important for us to keep ourselves just comfortable for probably some time before we say, come see us.
One of the final things I saw that, you know, we talked a lot about, and we attended the session on building good culture, boy, the, so many times we work on building culture at the top level, you know, working with educating parents, working with people in our community. But, boy, we came out of this building good culture from the bottom up, where I got three or four comments and emails from parents that their kids came home and couldn't stop talking about what they did down there. It's just another byproduct of the day that went down there that I thought was really neat to see some parents really kind of stand and say, hey, you know, that was great. And I think going forward there, that continues to build, you know, where it's the kids that generate the excitement and the, and the good culture, even at the middle school level for our district. So.
Well, and back to the students, you know, the one thing that was really unexpected was the fact that these kids wrote all kinds of little love notes to us all over the whiteboards, you know? And by love notes, I mean, you know, I love this school, you know, how much longer do we have to wait? When is this going to open? And, you know, they liked, you know, some of the different furnishings. We need 50 of these. And, you know, from the thing we've, they've called the bathtub, to the standing desk, to the wiggle chairs, you know, it was all really, really fun for them. So, those love notes, I think you captured some of those, Justin, in these pictures. And, and that was unexpected.
It was definitely experience that's not replicable. It, it happened in a space and time that was, that was very, all to its own space. And we talk about this a lot, not because, we're proud of it, but we really want to pass it on to the teachers and to the administrators. Thank you so much. You have done a great job. And you're congratulated at convention this year.
Absolutely.
Ryan Wise, Department of Education, the director, happened to stumble through the Classroom of the Future. So, I immediately went over and said, you know, thank you for stopping by to visit. Please come see us a year from now and tour the actual place. And he said, I, I'll be there. So, look forward to having him.
Please checkbook.
Yeah.
The state's checkbook. Anything else?
Maybe he can bring the governor.
We'll move on to agenda item five, which is the vision, vision statement. We had a workshop a couple of weeks ago with the administrative team on this, and I believe the final version is ready. the final version is ready for approval.
I think Mr. Johnson would like to come forward and share a couple of words.
I know we talked, well, good afternoon and good evening. I know we talked about this a couple of weeks ago and we haven't made any changes, simply because the conversation went really well with you all and the feedback that we had. We actually have added, so, upon approval tonight, if that's fortunate enough to happen, we're going to get together on Wednesday morning with the K-12 teachers to kick off our PD day and present this to them. Talk about the process a little bit, share some of the highlights from the year. It'll be a perfect day to get together for a little bit and talk about the mission and vision work that we've done and how we've come to where we're at and to kick off, you know, next trimester for the, for some of us here of coming back on the Monday after Thanksgiving. So, you know, as we talked last time, we met, this was something we wanted kind of to kick off the year with. Unfortunately, we weren't able to do that. But fortunately, I think we've come, come to a much better spot with the process and we're in a, you all feel better about it. We all feel better about it. It'll resonate a little bit more with the teachers. We've got, excuse me, we've gotten a lot of feedback opportunities over the course of the last, really almost calendar year now. So, I think we've done our due diligence to get the right kind of people to give us where they wanted us to go and kind of culminated with our discussion with you a couple of weeks ago. And, so you can see in your packet, and obviously you've had that information, the mission and vision statement that's listed. Do you want me to read them to the people here? Because they're not on, are we showing that?
Yeah.
If you don't, I will, either one.
You go ahead. It'll loop too quick for me.
This would probably be easier for you than trying to read it off the screen. Since it's looping.
Okay, so, the mission. "Our mission is to engage, inspire, and empower students and staff in order to maximize learning." The vision. "In everything we do, we aim to maximize learning for all students and staff. Through personalized learning experiences, student-centered environments, and real-world opportunities, individuals are challenged to positively impact the global community." So, those two things, you can see they kind of work together. Ironically, just what you guys spent 20 minutes talking about passionately, about the different things happening, it all fits right there. And then what we're going to talk about here next with the Iowa Big Week, everything kind of is circumventing back to this kind of rhetoric in the district, and we really like that. I know I'm sitting back there appreciating the comments you're making because you're, you're writing the mission statement as you're talking and as those experiences are happening. So, feel good about where we're at, appreciate the feedback. And, you know, it's not a fun process to get teachers together and say, "Hey, let's talk about the mission and vision of the district." It's just not an exciting thing for people. And we're, I think Robin made the comment that you can't replicate what happened down in Des Moines. You can't replicate everything that's happened in the district to get us here to this spot. With all those, without all those exciting things happening, we're not getting to a point where we can truly believe this is a mission and vision that we're going to be able to, to take on here going forward. So, it's really, it's really cool. So, appreciate everything. Is there any questions on it? We had mentioned before the tagline and some of the other parts, core value work. That'll be coming. We'll be taking that stuff on here as the year goes on, pretty much immediately when we get back from Thanksgiving, so.
Excellent.
Yep.
Any questions for administration on the mission and vision statement?
Just words of praise. Thank you.
Motion to approve the Charles City Community School District mission and vision statements as presented.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the district's mission and vision statements as presented. Any discussion or further questions? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote, please.
Wintering?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Dyke? Yes. Motion carried five to zero. Go forth and do well.
Do you want to introduce the next?
STEM Best's presentation. Go ahead.
I'm not going to take very much time at all because I know these two have a lot to talk about. And as, I've probably been looking forward to this presentation more than about any I've ever been involved with in education. So, we're talking about engaging and inspiring teachers. These two individuals, and Trudy Mckegg, one of our high school English teachers, were, we were able to set them up through the STEM Best grant to spend an entire week down at the Iowa Big School in Cedar Rapids, which I know we sent some videos and some stuff. If you've not gotten a chance, because I know you were busy last week, watch those. The TED Talk that the headmaster of this school gives summarizes a lot of what we want to do in education for students. And we're fortunate enough to be the first school, again, another first for Charles City, to have immersion training with this school down in Cedar Rapids, where they spent every day of the week of November 2nd through, or was it November 2nd?
Yeah.
An entire week being immersed in their culture, getting connected to things happening down in Cedar Rapids with this school. It's a school that's being national, nationally recognized for what they're doing to change education. It's not a flash in the pan. It's not just something that, "Oh, really cool thing happening in Cedar Rapids. Let's go check it out." I mean, they are literally changing the landscape of education, not only in Iowa, but really around the country. So, enough can't be said about the opportunity that we had to go down there. But I just want to give praise to these three individuals. You know, as a young teacher, you, you could look forward to going to conferences because you don't have a family. You're not, you don't have as much going on. These three people all have families. They all have responsibilities here in the district, and they took an entire week to go down there and do that. So, an immense undertaking for them. It shows the, the engagement that they have in this process. And not to be a cliche about the mission and vision, but they came back truly inspired. I got to go down there two different times and spend some time with them. The, where we're going to go with this work is incredible. I mean, the opportunities that we have right now to, to ride this as much as we can, it really can change the game. I can't, can't express that enough. And these two will talk a lot more about it than I will, and a lot better about it than I will. But I appreciate you guys supporting this. Never been part of a district that's, say, "We want to go somewhere and visit. We want to go down to a conference. Go, go learn." Trudy's actually up at the National Convention right now for English teachers, again, getting some more professional learning. So, it's a really great opportunity, but I'll leave them to that. I said I wouldn't talk much, but I always do. But these two got a lot of really good stuff to say, so, thank you.
Thank you.
This is Donna Forsyth from the high school, and Mike Kennan, who formerly of Charles City Employment, now over at New Hampton, part of our joint consortium.
What a perfect lead-in. When you guys started, just, I just wrote down a couple of things that you said. You know, our favorite part is what you, I think, Lorraine commented. And we had favorite parts the entire week, where we were just in awe with what we observed. And that's what we're here to share, just a little bit of that with you guys. Lead, not follow, was another statement that was made. And that's exactly what we want to do. So, thanks, Josh, for sharing that information. Again, he talked about Trudy, and she's gone right now. So, Mike and I are here to share a little bit about what got started. As you can see, Charles City, New Hampton, Osage, and Red Rockford, Marble Rock are all involved. So, we're really excited about the opportunities, not only that Charles City students and New Hampton students will have, but how we're going to work together with those other districts as well.
So, my name is Mike Kennan. And Josh, thanks. I think there was a compliment in there. He said something about young teachers, so I appreciate that. Dr. Hupdrograf couldn't be here tonight, and, and I think we're going to be presenting at all the area school boards, and so, savor a few miles as, as well. So, and, you know, just on what Director Walker had talked, had talked about, grade alike. This is it. I mean, yeah. And I know we get 10 minutes, so we're going to kind of move this along as quickly as we can. So, hopefully our passion doesn't extend too much and make us take too much time.
So, I had the, I have the class, Exploring Science Careers. And so, you know, I've been talking to the administration for quite some time about some opportunities. And, and I was still confused about Iowa Big, because I'm thinking, "Well, my kids are out and about, and I've got community members coming up." And so, I was just kind of like, "Okay, well, what is this all about?" I had to go and spend an entire week. I get it. I really, truly understand. And what I've done with Exploring Science Careers just is the tip of the iceberg as far as opportunities out there for kids. And so, I'm so excited about what we're going to be able to bring here. This is where we went every day. We started early in the morning and, and usually stayed there pretty late. This is what we called Home Sweet Home, and it was an absolutely beautiful building. The kids entered there, and that's where they spent their planning time.
Students are using two floors of this facility. One of the main things that we brought away was the communication that we had from not only the staff, but Dr. Pickering. This facility, it needs to be a separate facility. And how they achieved some of those learning objectives was, there's professionals that are working on both of these floors. The students are integrated with professionals, whether it be programming, attorneys, counseling sessions. So, the ability to bounce ideas off of each other was, was absolutely critical. This facility is fairly new. It's down in Check Village. So, if you're familiar with that at all, you can drive by it. There's activity there, I'm sure, six or seven days a week. That structure, the two floors, they are able to rent for $15,000 a year. I asked them what the market value was for that, $60,000 to $80,000. So, there's folks there that are invested in education. And I think, when we look at our four communities, you know, I, I think about my personal network, and I think about Donna's and, and the other folks from this area, I, I don't think that that's going to hold us up from getting where we need to be. And so, I really think that we're going, it's going to be more manageable for us, and we have the right folks to ask.
This is the team that we spent our time with. So, Shaun, you'll recognize him from the video. He was the founder. And then Dennis was social studies. Nate was the English person, and Troy was the community partnership guy. They were a great team, and, and it's really important for us as we continue and administration continues to look at the team that's going to be involved with this, that they're working together and that it, because it is such a different mindset, it's a new way of thinking, you know, you have to fully understand that and fully believe in it.
It was very interesting to watch them disagree on things. They were very respectful, and they were able to have conversations without stepping on anyone's toes. And they were very open, and, and it was, it was a lot of fun to watch. The professionalism was phenomenal.
So, this is how they got started. You'll recognize the back-to-school, which Josh has already put together at, at the high school. We're already getting that sense of what the community wants and needs. And they had a very willing school board, supportive administration, and this very excited, daring teacher, Shaun, and just ran with it. And that was three years ago.
Community partnerships, this position we think is essential. This is Troy Miller. He is a former teacher, but his main function right now for Iowa Big is to facilitate learning. And he does that for both students and the staff. When we were there, there were probably, I would say, at least three, maybe, maybe even four unexpected visits. The Ronald McDonald House had stopped in, and they wanted to have a conversation. So, when you start talking about the new addition at the school, yeah, there's going to be a lot of people there. But I will tell you, they were very, very open. And we, we also feel that we were very fortunate because they're viewing us as partners. They were impressed that our STEM grant was written so we could have one week of, of immersion there. With that being said, Mr. Johnson had said, "Even if we don't get that STEM grant, that's something we're going to be looking for." And so, we're going to have an awesome, we're going to have the pioneers of this type of education as our partners. Love to learn. These two young students, I offered to buy stock in their initiative that they started. It's called Shoelace. And their idea was that students in Cedar Rapids were looking for part-time jobs. And think about all the different applications that they had to fill out for part-time jobs. Subway, Menards, Home Depot. So, their idea was, "Let's make it simple. Let's put it on a computer. Let's make it a standard application, and let's put interests of those students on there." And that way, when the companies are looking for employees, they can go to one central location, look at the interests, and see if that would be a fit for them. So, rather than wasting all the money on training an individual and then finding out that that's not a fit, they've got two, they're seniors now, doing that homework for them and making that an opportunity. So, that's part of that service group. They're of service to others and themselves. So, yeah, they were awesome. Things that we heard, we know a lot of you were following us on Twitter. So, I mean, when Donna says that we were very excited, what a week. I mean, just, let's look at some of these things. Gives you the skills that are necessary to be successful in life, complete different mindset. And it's fun, too. You know, how many times are we hearing students say that it's fun? You know, hopefully we are. You know, in CTE, I think, and when you find things that they enjoy, it's a little bit easier. But the interdisciplinary that's going on, yeah, phenomenal. What Big does is takes you behind just the content. Seniors are saying that? Juniors? How, you know, they're really, really introspective and thinking about the big picture. We're working with real partners on real projects, so we have to use real problem, problem solving. Van Meter is an electrical supplier in Cedar Rapids. While we were there, they found out they were awarded a $7,000 grant to buy equipment to help them with a problem vent that Van Meter has. They haven't updated their inventory control for 20 years. They didn't, they weren't really sure what materials they had in the warehouse, what lean manufacturing, how that was affecting their bottom line. So, they came to the students and asked if they'd be interested. The students said absolutely. So, $7,000 grant that they got while we were there, one of those items was a $2,000 infrared camera that would fly with that drone. They were already talking about, "How can they go out and do energy audits with heating and air conditioning companies?" It was difficult for me to sit there and let them come up with that. So, when Donna talks about it being a different environment, allowing it to be student-based, that, that's what she means. And it was outstanding. This is Hannah. She's a junior this year. "I found Big and I'm in love." Hannah, at her mothership last year as a sophomore, skipped a lot of classes. And you might think, "Well, what's the big deal?" She was getting straight A's at her mothership, skipping a lot of classes. She found out about Iowa Big. She got enrolled in some elective classes. It's transformed her life. She said she doesn't skip classes at her mothership anymore because she's not going to miss the classes at Iowa Big. Every aspect of her life. She's more organized. She can't wait to get to school. When she led us on a tour, her and another student, I mean, they, they were excited. And they had seen, it wasn't like it was new. We had been there two or three days. So, this is what we want all students to say.
And those are Hannah's words. That's exactly what she said with excitement. So, when Mike refers to the motherships, all of the Cedar Rapids students are all welcome to come to Big, apply to Big. But that's what they call their homeschool, is their mothership. So, so, these are just some of the initiatives. And if you just go to Iowa Big, you'll have the opportunity to go into their projects, and then you can click on those. And so, those would both come from community organizations or from the students. So, if the students had a passion, then they would pitch their passion to the rest of the group. They would spend the first couple of weeks where the community members would come in and the students would pitch. And that's kind of how they decided which direction they were going to go. This is just, so, we have some pictures now that we can kind of go through. This is what we saw on a regular basis. So, this is a group of eight to 10 students that came in. The leaders were not chosen, so they weren't picked. They just emerged in this whole process. The thing that we noticed here as well is, not only did you have leaders, but everybody at the table felt that their voice was very valuable, that their ideas were very valuable, and everybody had that input. And this is Miles. Miles is the big advocate. And he was here with Troy. They had, the, the students, this is another initiative. So, the students are preparing for their presentations. And this was one that they were actually getting ready to go out the next day in Waterloo and present the big idea to a, a bunch of community members. And I think Josh and Sarah both got to that one. Another initiative, they were working on, they had just gotten some equipment in, and so they had to start as a consumer, first of all. They want to write legislation. They want to change legislation on how, how, what's acceptable to get PE credits. Okay? They feel that there's a better way for kids to be able to self-monitor and get their exercise and get credit for that and not have to lose out. And so, they had to be a consumer, first of all. Instead of a Fitbit, they bought this one. And so, we asked them, "How come you guys bought this one?" And they said, "Well, we had to research, and we had to get the most for our buck." And so, we found that this one would do everything that we wanted it to do. So, they were here deciding whose task was what. One of them, simply her task was try to cheat it. To, so, just like some kids might try to do, you know, "How can I cheat the system?" What was really interesting on this particular day is Dennis, the social studies teacher, is actually kind of in charge of this group. So, each initiative has a teacher that's overseeing everything. And he came in, he was kind of busy doing stuff, and they were all busy. And he goes, "Hey, you guys, I have some things to take care of. Are you okay?" And barely even looking up, they said, "Oh, yeah." And I mean, it was just nothing. And he just went about his business. They were completely engaged. And that's what just brought excitement to us.
The first day we were there on Monday, Nate was gone. They don't get substitutes. You would not have known it from the activity that was going on in the workspaces, that their supervisor wasn't there. This, this is the norm for them. For five days, this is what we saw. Before we go any further, we got some more slides. Do you have questions? Is there anything that's pressing right now that you can't wait a minute? Yes, sir?
On your first slide, you talked about the, the building in Check Village.
Correct.
And we had been very intentional with the application of saying, "Our big portion would take part in New Hampton for New Hampton kids, and Osage for Osage kids, Charles City, Rockford, so that you could stay home and not have to travel to some other school district to take part in this." What's your take on that after being at Iowa Big?
Absolutely not. That's not grade alike. That, you know, we, we talked about that from the standpoint of travel. And I asked one of the kids, we started talking about motherships. And if you think about Prairie down there on the southeast side of 35, or, excuse me, of 380, excuse me, of 380, going towards Iowa City, I asked the kids, how long does it take you to get to Iowa Big? And they said, when the traffic is good, and they hit everything just right, anywhere from 12 to 15 minutes. Otherwise, takes 15 to 20, sometimes 25 minutes. Guess what? Charles City is centrally located. Think about stu-, I, I didn't know that, Dr. Cox.
And with your New Hampton hat on.
Correct.
Because I, I just really wanted, we were intentional trying to say, let's let people come in at their own comfort level, rather than coming to a place that isn't their own. With your New Hampton hat on, you, you would still say New Hampton kids would drive to another location?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And, and I can say that, because in the classes that I teach, the kids were asking me, okay, some are giving me static, some are asking me, took a week of vacation. And I said, nice try, fellas, and ladies, because there's some ladies in the CTE there as well. So we had a discussion, I kind of gave them a mini tour, I talked about that travel. The kids are not concerned about the travel. Parents might be. It might be a little challenge to get that started, but no, I, I think it needs to be here, and that's my personal opinion.
And that's what I want to tap into.
And on that, the kids chose their initiatives because of their passion. And many times on this conversation, we would watch the kids, they didn't know where their partners, their people were from. It wasn't a part of the conversation, and you could tell that, because it's like, okay, now, what school are you, you know, what's your mothership? So, that was not a norm, which I was surprised at. I thought maybe they would get into that a little bit more, but they didn't. So I would totally agree with Mike completely. It's about passion. So, what do you want to do? Where do you want to go? What do you want to do with it?
How were the kids selected to be part of Iowa Big?
Okay. So in my conversations that I had with my dad occasionally, you know, he said, well, of course they're doing well, you have all the upper-end kids. And I'm like, oh, that might be right. So the next day, I asked Dr. Pickering and Troy, what's a cross-section of your students? And they said, our GPA here ranges from 1.5 to 4.3. The 4.3 comes about, one of the high schools is very, very heavily involved with AP classes, so that allows them to get above that 4.0. And I just, you know, Donna and I were visiting, too, and I just said, you wouldn't, wouldn't have known that they all didn't need a minimum of a 3, or a 3.5. If you would have asked me to pick out who that 1.5 was, I couldn't do it. He also said, we have someone here that has a substance abuse problem. When they are with us, that is not an issue. So, the cross, when you look at what they wear, when, I, you have no idea. So, it's for everyone. They are, it's an elective, so they're visiting with their counselors. They're, they're talking about now, there's 93 students there. They were supposed to have 120 for this, for this year. One of the motherships changed one of their required classes and it knocked out about 25 kids. They're looking at being at 600 kids within two to three years. They're looking at another site. They want it spread throughout the city, where it's more accessible to eat, you know, closer to other schools, and give kids opportunities. So...
And our application is written to be open to all students regardless of GPA?
Because I can-
For the exact reason that Mike talked about.
From the video, it sounds like they basically lay it on the students. It's, what did, what did they say? Participate or get out?
Yeah.
I heard that on the video that you, that you had us watch.
Right, produce, yeah.
Produce or produce.
And they would say that. They would have that conversation, and they would say, you know, Johnny, it doesn't appear that you're real excited about this, and this is from you. You chose this initiative. And so they'll have that conversation, and if that passion doesn't float to the top, then they'll say, you know, this isn't working for you, you need to spend more time at your mothership. And then they're done, they go back to the other. So, in this particular picture, there is a student from the alternative school that's right down, two blocks down the road. So, they have the alternative kids in there as well.
And then how does, excuse me, how does the scheduling, because it wasn't until I watched those videos, too, that I realized that, that they just don't show up here every single day. They have the mothership.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And what is the, I'm sure everybody has a different type of schedule, but what's kind of the generic? Is there the one that, do they send semesters here? Do they spend just certain hours a day, or?
So, they're very flexible. That's one thing. And Sean said that in one of his videos, you know, the, the constraints of our current system is, I have to get through this calculus class, they must add blocks, as he said, 80 minutes. And so there, you would see kids coming in and out. So there might be, this is their initial group, and all of a sudden, somebody might get up and go out. And they just pretty much know that. And then Mike's going to show a slide a little bit later, the computer program that they use, and that's the way they're all communicating. And they might, before the group gets done, okay, you know, we've got kind of a big group here, we've got to get together, we might have to divide this into two halves. Who can meet Monday, Tuesday? You know, and they're raising their hand, and they're putting their schedule together. But that computer program also, you put your schedule in there, and it pretty much will line up your, your groups. But you can't, it's not that you can't be a part of an initiative, your schedule doesn't have anything to do with that. Passion is what we start with, and then we'll figure out the rest of it. So, just because I'm not there, doesn't mean that I'm not responsible for doing the things that need to get done. And if I need to leave early, that doesn't eliminate my responsibility of communicating with my group. So, and, and it just happened. Just, that's what we observed the whole week as well.
It's basically like working from home, telecommuting. That's what these students have the opportunity to do. And like I said, there's a, a learning management system, they've got a nice name for it. And, so, yeah, it's real world.
So then, it sounds like, from the question you asked in your response, that we need to find a place for Iowa Big in Charles City, perhaps, if the other schools in the consortium come to the same conclusion?
After they've done the four presentations.
Yeah.
And we, we need to be convening, we, the four school districts, a committee that really is in charge of meeting monthly, to say, here's how we're going to lay everything out, and here's how we're going to implement. And obviously, Mike and Donna are going to be key, as well as Trudy, in that process.
You know, an example I'll give you, I, I visited with Kirk Cole while I was down there. And he said, oh, you're probably at just one of those other teacher professional developments. And I said, no, Kirk, do you have a minute? He said, yeah, go ahead. I told him what I was doing, and he said, that's what education needs. All right? So you're talking about one of the, a, a very prominent business owner in New Hampton and regionally. He's going to be very, very receptive when we start having these conversations. So, I just talked to him one day last week, Mike, let me know what you need. And, and again, we're all going to be able to do that. I, I really do believe that's the culture, and that's where we're at right now, so... Okay, so the one thing I'll touch on here, this is the Physics Olympics, and we're going to get the drone involved. So, some of those young students that Mr. Johnson was talking about, yeah, there's one of them. Okay? But the young man to the right is training me on flying a drone. That's the first time I'd ever put my hands on a controller. Very, very patient. He could be a teacher. He is that good. But they incorporate that drone not only into the agriculture, but they're going to incorporate it into the Physics Olympics, involving STEM in the area schools. It's phenomenal, the ideas that these students come up with. Learning to code, just because, this is the only initiative that we talked about all week that wasn't student-based. Cedar Rapids Public Library was having an issue with younger students coming in and not utilizing the resources there, and basically just going and messing around. They went to Iowa Big and said, what can we do? Sean came up with the idea to teach kids, high school kids, to write computer code. Eight kids come just because. They're not getting any credit. Not only are they coming on Monday nights, and Donna will touch on that a little bit more, but then on Wednesday and Friday nights, they're taking those younger kids that had been coming in and being a problem, or more of a challenge, and they're teaching them to write code. One of those students is so good, that I heard Sean say, as soon as you are done with this language, I'm going to teach you one more, and without going to college, you could make $200,000 a year, if you know those two languages. Hello, holy smokes. Outstanding, so...
So it was 6:45, and I'm thinking, I'm hungry, it's time to leave. And Sean said, I seriously have to tell these kids, you need to go home, I have to leave. So, they're just, that's, they're just there, just simply because, not associated with any credit or anything else. So, very impressed with that.
Newsroom, this is an opportunity for kids that are interested in writing, broadcasting. This is kind of their PR group, that is vocalizing everything good that Iowa Big is doing. You know, they go around and they're talking about stories, and different ways they can communicate that, whether it's for radio, whether it's for TV, whether it's blogs, Twitter, whatever social media is, and just engaged. So, instead of writing a 10-page paper, how many articles aren't these students writing? They're using practical applications for, you know, other than going to a four-year school?
Yeah. Erin in the back there was so impressed, I was so impressed with her, actually, all three of us spoke about that, and went to her and said, Erin, we're really impressed with your leadership skills, how she just talks to each person. And, and they said, well, what do you want me to do? And she would say, what do you think you need to do on this? I mean, just unbelievable. And afterward, I went up and I talked with one of the instructors and said, we were so impressed with Erin, and he just kind of said, she's really developing, she's really growing. But that's what she does every day. I mean, that's just the expectation. They take care of it. Okay, so that's just a planner, but that's the norm. That's not the exception, that's the norm. That's the way they keep their schedule all the time. Third Street Fashion, this young man was amazing. He has a real passion with fashion. And so, what their initiative is, is that they're designing clothing, and it's for a specific group of people. And he actually has a little sideline business. He goes to Chicago and purchases stuff, and has his own website, and does all this. But that's just something that he does on his own, because he has this true passion. And sometimes, you can go ahead and flick, Mike, there's some expense. So, one of the things with this is that, they don't know how to sew, so who's going to teach them how to sew? So they looked up classes, where they could get classes and stuff. Well, he said, you know, a lot of us don't have a lot of money, and so it's pretty expensive. So, they decided to design belts, which goes right along with what they're doing. And so, they had to get the loan, and take out all of the, the things beforehand, but they, you know, did the spreadsheet and everything, as far as how many belt, belts do they need to sew, so that people can have some financial support with their sewing classes that they're going to do.
Yeah, I was very fortunate. Bill and Jill Reichs, from Turkey Valley, they started a clothing business, or a sewing store down in Cedar Rapids and Iowa. I think they're up to two or three stores. So they were talking about how expensive the classes were. So, I made a phone call, and I think they're going to make a connection. And I think they're, you know, and their question was, okay, well, how will this be beneficial to us in the future? And I said, well, if you look at expanding, may, maybe there's research that they can do for you. Okay? That young man that was helping me fly the drone, they're researching a cur-, a dedicated curling facility. He's a high schooler, in Cedar Rapids, Iowa. They don't want to practice where the Rough Riders go. They're looking at purchasing land. I mean, yeah, it, it is phenomenal. So...
One more thing, when Mike makes that phone call, he says, should I be doing this? So, he steps in, because we're changing our mindset. We're not doing, the kids are doing. So I, it was just really funny. He's, I said, no, it's okay, because you're going to save them some money. So you make all the contacts you can. But that's, that's what we're talking about. It's not about us, it's about the kids. And so that's, you know, you just got to shift and step back and let them run, because they will. This is what we observed the whole time. You know, we constantly use those two words, communication and collaboration. It was completely observable all the time. This is Isaac, and Isaac was, he's, this, he's going to be a very interesting young man to, to follow through. He is their only student that is engaged 100% of the time with Iowa Big. He's a freshman. So, it's kind of a unique situation. He is Troy's son, and so he has to open and roll him from North Liberty, and that's how much they believe in this. It's like, my kid's going here. So, he is full-time there. Isaac has this interest in mushrooms. And so when they were out one day, he started investigating, and anyway, he, he looked up something and said that, there's a particular mushroom that will decompose plastic. And he said, wouldn't it be really cool if we could grow those mushrooms that would decompose plastic, and then we could sell it to Landfills and all this? So, he needed to find out, well, what does it take for a mushroom to grow? So he literally went to the grocery store, purchased, did some research, found out, so in the basement, actually, it's on the first floor, he has these mushrooms growing in these containers. And he started with this, just with some mushrooms, very small amount of mushrooms on there. And every day, we'd go down and look at this, and he was just amazed. He's like, look at this. So every day, we would go down. This is only one of the 12 projects, or initiatives, that Isaac is involved in. So, it was really exciting to go down to the basement every day and see what he was watching, growing. And he, again, he's just happy to share. You, you would get in there right away, and he was off working, and he would just get up, and when other group members would come in for another project, he would get started in that. And he, really learning how to manage his time, for sure.
So this is seminar. This is as close to a traditional classroom as they have at Iowa Big. And they have different areas that they talk about. The session that I sat in was on poetry. And I will tell you, that right away, I had a little negative connotation of poetry. But I can also tell you that in the 40 minutes that I listened, I learned more in that 40 minutes than I've learned in my entire lifetime. And it's not one-to-one there. There's 10 to 12 kids there. But that's what that setting allows them to do. 40 minutes. So if you look at block scheduling, they're getting to that 20, 25 kids within that setting, but with a lot more attention. And so, it, it was absolutely phenomenal. There's not a student in that room that did not contribute. And, you know, right away, you think, okay, how interested are they going to be? Engaged. Engaged in poetry in high school. Try and pull that off. Okay? That is phenomenal. It was outstanding. Okay, anybody that knows me knows I love food. Okay, so barbecue, that's why I had said earlier, you'll like the name, or I really like the name. This is their learning management system. They're addressing 394 standards, not just in an English classroom, or a math classroom, or a social studies classroom. They're addressing it when they visit with companies, when they visit with the Ronald McDonald House, with United Way. United Way is one of their largest partners, and most supportive. So they, every single day, they take a block of students, and they go through and say, yep, I witnessed this this week, or I witnessed that yesterday. We can mark them as proficient. They're not quite there. They're partially proficient. I'm not comfortable marking that yet, so they leave it blank. The students, they're hardly aware, they have a different view than what the teachers do. And so, I, I think Donna or Trudy had asked, well, how do you make them aware? They're steering. And when it gets close to the end of the semester, if they need a little one-on-one, or they need an area where they really need, see that they need help, then they address that. But other than that, they're getting it through the interdisciplinary. Where do we start? The three things that are required to be in Iowa Big. The student has to have a passion. They're getting to choose what they're going to get their education on. All right? What, who doesn't want that? They all want that. Interdisciplinary, that's easy. There isn't a classroom going on anymore that does not involve interdisciplinary. So that's easy. Here's the third one. Service. Service to others. When you're around that setting, and you watch high school students have the ability to empathize, have the ability to put others before their own needs, or what their wants are, to see that group work take place, phenomenal. I mean, I don't know how many times we didn't communicate back with Dr. Uptograph or Mr. Johnson, and just say, oh, my lord. Well, actually, when they came down, we said, yeah, we're not coming back. Okay? We enjoyed it that much. So, you know, that's what they need. When do we want to start? Second tri-, semester, third try, or 2016? We just know that we want to be ready when we start. We want to make sure that we've got everything laid in place. Our huge advantage is us being down there for that week. They're looking at us as partners. The students even said, we will do projects with you guys. It, yeah. I mean, it's, they're as excited as we are. And so, we have a huge resource available to us, and I, and I think it's going to go both ways, and we're, yeah, I think it's going to be a great team.
So Sean is, or Troy is bringing some students up. I believe it was December 7th, I forgot to look at the schedule, but he's going to come up and spend that day with, with some of our kids. And so we're thinking, we might be able to expand that out to the other districts, and see if they want to bring a couple of kids. And then Troy's coming back, it sounds like maybe December 14th and 15th. So, what will work out there? But you were talking about the mothership, so they might go to the, their mothership in the morning, and then they would show up at Big in the afternoon. There were some groups in the morning as well, and then they would go back. But very, very flexible with that.
That, North Iowa Big, we weren't sure of a name, you know, and, but, they want to be a- be associated with us. They had said, you know, because when we were down there, they were getting all these calls and all these contacts. And they're like, "Okay." I mean, they've done, like CC, they've done a great job of branding. We're very, very fortunate that they're, they want us to be a part of their brand. And so I, I really think we need to embrace that and, and utilize that. And like I said, I think they're going to be a huge resource.
So Max is a senior, my baby is a senior. And I had said, "Josh, let's get going. Let's offer this third trimester. Max will be a trial kid." And I know other people. Because it's just, that's how exciting it is. I want my, my baby and all the other kids to have an opportunity for this. This is truly an advantage that, once again, Charles City is going to be in the lead and not a follower. So we appreciate the opportunity. If you have additional questions, want to talk more, I know that we, on our last slide, we had the Iowa Big. So just go there, go through that. And, yeah, any other questions?
What's your one takeaway?
Go ahead.
Or your, your biggest takeaway from there?
We have to have a separate facility.
Okay.
It has to be where professionals are involved. And it can be, the interactions can happen with adults. And it's away from, it's away from the regular education. That would be my biggest takeaway. And I want to echo, thanks a lot for the opportunity. Again, if there was something going on in the summer, this is one of those deals. I take a break from driver's ed and I'll go. Absolutely awesome. So...
And, and mine would be passion. I guess I love that word anyway. But, you know, if we can just bring that passion back into kids and have them want to come in, you know, when Sean said that, kids, you know, are excited about a snow day. And, and I understand that. I mean, who doesn't like a snow day? But I want kids to love learning. And here, you couldn't shut it off. You just couldn't shut it off. So how do you not get excited about that?
With that being said, they were kind of discussing how they were going to do spring break. The kids want to be at Iowa Big. They're worried, they don't, Iowa Big is not going to close over spring break. That, they are going to staff it the whole time. Same thing at Christmas. Kids want to be there. So...
Yeah. So the, the teachers are each, you know, still going to get their week or whatever amount of time. They're just going to make sure that there's always somebody there. And so the teachers, again, very flexible, extremely dedicated people. On Thursday night, it wasn't part of this, but it was the initiative, the startup. And so the teachers were there early in the morning at eight. And we were at an evening, an evening activity. And it was, wow, I don't know, 9:30 or 10 o'clock. So they're very committed. They completely believe in what they're doing and, and the opportunities they're providing for kids. So it was great.
Well, you know, I think though, I mean, the word, one of the first words you guys said when you came up here was immersion. And that's, I mean, that's what it, what it is. I mean, you, just like you guys put yourself into it to learn about it, that's the position these kids are putting themselves into, to get the most out of it, to be engaged into, to all that stuff. It's, it's, it's something that truly can very quickly validate, you know, like you talked about. They get to pick topics that, at this time, you know, a freshman, do they really know what they want to do long-term? Do they really know what they want to go to college for, whatever it may be? If they have opportunities here at a much earlier age to start really looking at those things and being involved in them, they can either really validate, say, "Yeah, that's what I really want to do for the rest of my life," or for college, or whatever. That's, that's a big head start. How many high school kids come out of high school and say, "I'm going to, I'm going to go to school and I'm kind of undecided." And they go a couple of years, rack up a bunch of student debt, and then they really don't know what they want to do. You know, this is an opportunity that they can really focus on something, have some outcomes, you know, that, that show them to say, "Hey, this is, this is it." Or maybe not. Maybe it's, maybe, maybe it's not the, the right, right way to go. But it's, it's, it reminds me a lot of my senior capstone class in college. You know, I didn't get this experience until I was in four year, fourth year in school. At that time, my mom and dad said, "No, you're, you're going," you know, whatever. But to have that opportunity at this young age is a pretty cool, pretty cool experience. And you're right, we've got industry and we've, very diverse industry around here. I said that, you know, ever since I moved here, the opportunities for partnerships are, are just there. They really are. And I think that, given some facilitation, some guidance, that they'll, they'll just grow. And I think it would be a, we have a great opportunity here in, in North Iowa.
I'm excited to see, three years ago, when we were at convention, Dr. Cox might be able to help me with the speaker that was at that point, that spoke to us at that convention. He spoke about how kindergartners come in with this much creativity. And by the time they leave high school, we're down to this little funnel like this. What I see this doing is exploding that again and bringing that, that creativity level back up. And that, to me, is, that, I sat there doing that.
Kevin Honeycutt?
And then the other gentleman too. I think they, they both were piggybacked on each other that year. And it was both that conversation of, of how we're squashing these kids' creativity. And I know I left there thinking, "How can we in Charles City change that?" And here we are. We're going to change that. And that, that's very good.
I hope Max does get that chance because I'll say it again, I want a do-over on my own high school education. I had a very good high school education, but all the great things that we're doing here with Smart Lunch and, you know, all the things that are bubbling to the surface, you know, Iowa Big looks like, "Wow, sign me up." It looks so good. I had a question though, and, and I don't know if you have the answer, maybe Dr. Cox, you might. How is, let's say we, we do find a space and, and we, you know, all the other schools within the consortium agree, "Okay, this is the location of North Iowa Big." How is this all funded?
We have the $25,000 grant that we received from the state of Iowa, the STEM Best Grant. We also have $40,000 and counting, worth of in-kind donations.
That's right.
And that was just what we had gathered at the time of the application. You know, by September 1, there were additional businesses that were on board and hadn't gotten a, a letter yet to us. So that's why I say it's $40,000 and counting. It, it could be $70,000 worth of in-kind.
Okay.
So the $25,000, we have to spend by June 30th of 2016. So this is going to be implemented in some fashion, second semester, third trimester, somehow, some way. And we're already, you know, putting some of that money to good use, like the week-long experience for the three that we sent right now to Cedar Rapids, bringing Troy up to talk about business partnership development, the barbecue system that we're going to be able to tap into with Iowa Big. So it, it's going to happen. And right now, the, we've got a budget laid out for that first $25,000. But there was nothing set aside for renting a space in a downtown district in any of the four communities. So that would, that would be above and beyond, or it would have to be an in-kind contribution from one of the locales.
Those two videos that we watched, can we put those on Channel 4, Justin? Or on our website? Or both?
Yes, or links.
Or links, yes, something. I think, I think it would be interesting for the community to understand, especially that TED Talk, because really, when you talk about, what is this?
We may have to look at some licensing or copyright or something about putting that on...
Permission, yeah.
Permission to do that. But we, we certainly can make that better communicated to the public.
Even just those short videos explained so much for me. It really did make a lot of sense. And I love, I just love this quote because it's been running in my head all day. Fail into something better. That I just, that's been running because I feel like we're at that point here at this board. We've done that. And that's just great, Stephen, for a school to be making.
Right now, you get a grade for what you complete. It's all about completion.
Yes.
You know? And if you don't complete it, you don't get a grade or you get a bad grade. In here, it's not about completion at all. It's about the learning as you're going through. So many of these projects, in fact, the success sheet that he started with, with Kinsey Farmer, that's still running. There is no completion to it. It's just continuing. And so it's not about that. They may find that what they're doing right now, it's not going to work. So you know what? This is not going to work. This is where we are. You don't get a bad grade because it doesn't work. You, you succeed because of the learning that went on through it. And Sean's not about grades, you know? He's, and so I talked to the kids and said, "Well, what standards, you know, what are you working on?" And they're like, they kind of look at you like you're talking a foreign language, "Standards?" And he goes, "We don't talk about standards." You know, they're there. And the kids go, "We know they're there, but we don't worry about that." I mean, that's just not a focus for them. So it's just, they're learning. They are learning real-life things and they love learning and they're excited and they're doing great things. So thanks for your time, you guys. Yeah.
And finally, you mentioned the Great alike thing. And the, you know, I think that's a big part of this too, is that all of our, you know, even now, you get into the high school level, all of the kids have favorite friends to work with on pro whatever else. Relationship building and team building is such a core component, no matter what it is you do in life after you leave high school, that more experience and work with that is, is going to be a very long-lasting experience for all of them. So I really like the, the multi-district component of it too. So great analogy of it.
And I want to commend New Hampton, Osage, and Rockford school officials for jumping on board with us to form a consortium to say, "Let's bring something new and unique to North Iowa." It, you know, we had a hand in this, but we can't do it without the other three districts as well. And we already have other districts who have said, "Hey, I want to jump on with that project because that looks really cool." So I think this could be upwards of nine school districts in our area within a, a short period of time.
I want to thank you for your enthusiasm and your participation in that week. On behalf of all the districts and the students, I think this is the beginning of great things to come. Your enthusiasm and passion is spilling over amongst this table. And I'm sure you'll have full support in moving forward, at least from this district, from the way it sounds. So go give your presentations to the other districts and let's see how big we can make this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to Agenda Item 7, which is the 2016 Summer Facility Projects from the Buildings and Grounds Committee and Director Jerry Mitchell.
So Buildings and Grounds Committee met, put together their proposal for that, to me, as superintendent, to bring to you as a school board. And it is $314,200 annual expense, $230,000 for the high school cafeteria, and $222,300 for the transportation center, and $6,000 for a tracer. $772,500 total. And I know that there are questions, so I would invite Jerry to come up to the microphone. And between Jerry and me, we will provide the information that board members are seeking.
Well, I'll talk a little bit about the conversation we had in Buildings and Grounds too with the, you know, in the past, we've seen big lists of, you know, painting this and, and doing, you know, minor projects here and there. And the conversation with Jerry and the ICAT report that was previously completed, we've substantially finished much of those, those things that were identified in there. Right, Jerry?
Correct.
You know, so that we're at a position now where we played catch-up for the last several years. We're virtually caught up on a number of those outstanding things, which affords us the opportunity now to look at doing maybe the roof, probably a bigger project, but then also some set aside for the transportation center to get that finished. And then the, the regular standard annual stuff that we have, that come out of that as well.
I got a question. What is a tracer? I meant to ask this earlier.
Jerry?
Yep. It's a thing that will help us, save us financially, quite a bit of money through the district. What happens is we have a lot of internal power lines, sewers, storm sewers on our property. And I always have to hire someone to come in and trace those out every time I do a project. So it's, it's a piece of equipment that we can do our own tracing. We have a real cheap one right now, not very reliable, so we usually have to hire someone to do that.
Okay.
And it's on our own property, so we're responsible to do that.
Much cheaper than hitting a gas line or a power line or something.
Correct. Even if we're planting, you know, for example, planting trees at the football field, we had to get everything marked there. So I had to, I think that bill was, I don't know, five, $600, just to mark that all out. So...
And since we're a long way from being complete with our construction, we thought there's...
Yeah. A lot of things going on.
Well, the one thing that popped out at me, let's see here, where is it? The roof, replace the roof above the high school cafeteria, $230,000. Question that I had is, that cafeteria, to my knowledge, is not a part of Phase 2 as we've seen the design moving forward. And so, you know, I'm, I'm feeling optimistic. Of course, I'm always the glasses half-full type of person. I'm feeling like, you know, perhaps in three years, we, I'd like to see Phase 2 built. And so if that cafeteria at this time isn't part of that, is there a lesser way to, for the short term, fix that problem?
Sure. Dr. Cox and I talked about that a little bit more in detail today. And there's, if, and I guess I wish I would have been a little more prepared, but there's, when you see the roof, as you look at it, there's really five sections that we've talked about. There's an N, O, P, Q, and R. And the reason it's five sections is each section's approximately anywhere from 40 to 50 foot wide, probably 75, 80 foot long. And then there's a curb stop in between each one, each roof that's about a foot tall. So if you replace each of those sections, you can pick and choose a section also. What we originally went through is just maybe do O through R as, as our primary project, with N being an additional project, if the bids come in better because of that additional project. Now, the, the bad roof leaks that we have, if everyone's been in our cafeteria and seen them, and ceiling tiles open, is right at the entrance to the stage to go up into, into the gym there. The problem is, that whole roof there is the same age. Extremely old. A metal roof deck's underneath of it. We could have possibly, and you might think, "Well, the leak's right above that in section O or P, one of those two." And I'm not sure exactly which one it falls under. But that could be actually in section Q or R, hit that metal roof deck and run down to the first opening in the roof. So we can try and do like maybe an O and a P, or an O, or just the P section, and hopefully takes care of it and then maybe patch some. There's been a couple of big patches up there done before I started here. And it's a gravel roof right now, a tar-gravel roof. And it's been patched with sort of like, it looks like, almost like roof decking material, but the rocks all removed off it. So when we were talking and discussing, really that's, besides the bus barn facility, that's really my number one need, is trying to get that roof either repaired, replaced, or whatever. So I'm open to whatever the board decides is best for the district. And, and I understand completely what your question is. But the longer we wait and don't do something on the roof, I'm concerned, the more damage we'll do to that area.
Is this something that we can ask Estes or BLDD about a cost-benefit analysis? Or did you talk to, to BLDD or anything about this?
Well, Estes, I meet once a week for sure with Estes. And we discuss what projects I got going on and everything. And it was brought up in a meeting that they're, that what they were looking at for possibly Phase 2. But that's to the extent that I've talked to them about it.
It all goes back to the statement that you made about Phase 2 and the, the fact that we don't have a common agreement as to what Phase 2 even looks like. There's the Phase 2 that has been drawn by the architect, but there are other Phase 2 discussions that we've had that involve things like locating a portion of the YMCA, but the high school, like keeping that wing that we're talking about right now and only eliminating the circles. And there isn't a unanimous vision of what even Phase 2 looks like. And, and that's where part of this dilemma comes from.
It is. And, and quite frankly, I think that we need to stay true to ourselves in this discussion and true to the district and not worry so much about the why. You know, I mean, if they want to come and, and take whatever we're not utilizing, well, we can see how that fits. But I don't want to make these decisions to spend $230,000 on a roof when we might, in all reality, leave that possibly in three years. And so I, I'm, you know, we were talking about being visionary. And I feel like the big picture is being visionary. What is Phase 2? Where is it going to be? What's it going to look like? Rather than tunnel vision, "Well, we have a leaky roof and we need to fix it." I don't disagree that we need to invest the money in our facilities at all. But I just question whether there might be a, a different way to do it so that it, it, it fits for maybe the next three to five years rather than change the course of the next 25 years.
And I respectfully disagree with BLDD's version of what Phase 2 is. And I respectfully disagree with BLDD's version of what Phase 2 is. It was drawn to not impact the current high school, so that we didn't have to have portable buildings.
Oh, okay.
That's why it's back on the backside, that's why it takes away everything that you're going to create with the views out to the east. And it, it, it's easy to say, well, it doesn't matter, the high school fits right there, just be done with it. But I think when you move into this new facility, you're going to have a different appreciation for, right, what have we created, and do we really want to just plop down something here because it's open and it doesn't cause us to have any portables? Or does it make more sense to relocate the new high school space, at whatever point that is going to be, in another area that is currently?
Such as the 500 Circle.
Exactly.
See, I guess I haven't heard any of those conversations.
Oh.
About locating within the five, I mean, that, that's going way back to the red plan though, folks.
No, that was the music circle, not the 500 Circle.
Is this part of the roof that, take it, does this take water off the gymnasium now?
Correct, part of, and part of this plan too, I, I can explain that a little bit. Underneath that new roof that was put on the gym, there's some existing roof drains from when that was a flat roof. Part of this project and some of the costs, why, so you see some of the costs, what they are, we're going to take the existing roof drains underneath there, bring those out the backside, take that flat roof that has all the drains that are going onto the flat roof, and get those off of the roof instead of draining onto the flat roof. So, we also got that incorporated into this project also to help with that roof.
Have the eave troughs on the north side of the gymnasium, are they work functioning?
They work great.
They're taking care of all the water then?
They're taking care of it, but what the problem is, it dumps right on that flat roof, so we added tile to it to take it right to the roof drains. But still, if you get a big rain, it, it's too much to handle. So, that's why we take existing drains that are there, not being used, incorporate them and get that roof drains into those drains, so they don't dump onto that flat roof anymore. So, that would be part of this project.
So, Jerry, this $230,000 that's proposed to be budgeted for the high school cafeteria, is that going to continue to be a flat roof, or are we looking at putting in a steel sloped roof?
It'll be a 30-year rubber warranted roof, but it'll be a sloped insulation underneath that. So, but it will be a, of, what, in all reality, it's a flat roof, but it's a sloped roof. It will be very similar to what you see on the current middle school that's being built. If you get back and look at the middle school and look at it from the road, how it's sloped.
Yep.
That's exactly what this new roof will be with an insulation instead of a metal. How that one's metal or built right in and designed into it, this one will be made into one with insulation underneath of it. And that's what, anymore now, anytime a, a flat roof's replaced, we always do a buildup insulation underneath.
Right.
That way you create a slope. If you look at the current roof that we want to replace, it's flat, it, it's completely flat. In fact, in a couple of spots, it's up a little bit away from the drains for some reason. If it's over the years, just got it, water underneath and froze and, and lifted or what, but.
Well, I feel like I'd like to table this roof, the roof replacement, until we have further discussion. I just don't know where you guys, somebody's going in a different direction than the last, than the last design meetings that we had with BLDD when we looked at Phase 2.
It's because we had multiple months of FEH studies and community inputs.
Well, I realize that.
And other things as well.
I've not changed my position in at least 12 months about being opposed to plopping down the Phase 2 portion right in front of the new middle school that's being built.
But we didn't see any, did we see any designs on that? Seems like it was all on the backside.
We haven't spent any money on that, no.
Everything that BLDD has drawn.
Right.
I, at least 12 months, I have been on record as, I'm opposed to this because it, for the same things that I just said now, that I, I don't agree of where they're putting it. You five have to be the ones that decide what Phase 2 ultimately looks like.
Because right now, they're putting it where it fits into the schools that it works should be.
Well, they're putting it where it fits in, so that you don't have to ever have any portables.
Portables.
And the school can just continue to operate, which makes sense from an academic standpoint.
Yeah.
Doesn't make sense in the whole layout of what you're trying to accomplish.
So, this means we've got to go back to redesign.
And that's why I've given no.
Redesign Phase 2, yeah.
Right.
And that's why I've given no even, even thought or, or given any, any energy into Phase 2 essentially, because it's, it's, A, it's dependent on a bond passing, that, you know, to, to, you know, push and change decisions on some of this stuff, you know, thinking that, okay, well, in two years, we, we're going to pass a bond and go. That's ideal, obviously, who knows? We could be independents and take nine times to do it. And in 10 years down the road, had we not done this work now, we're going to be thinking, oh, it's 10 years of whatever. If this work was over the circles, I think we'd all be in a unanimous agreement and say, hey, that's a waste of money because those are coming down. My opinion over this space is a space that there's at least enough question or concern over it that I can't support tearing down industrial technology space, or the open cafeteria space, or the gym, to build a new space, that space 100 yards away. I think that that kind of stuff is, is more, you know, that, these kind of decisions to do this kind of work on that space is more valid than, like I said, trying to put any energy or effort into the circles.
So, if it, if it helps at all, I, I would like to make a suggestion on, if, if we're concerned about the entire project, why not just go to a smaller project with alternates to go expand it out, see what the bids come back at? So, my exa, my, my suggestion would be, after hearing what everyone's talking about, is doing maybe O and P as our base bid, which is the two sections that are the, the most current, right over top of where the major leak is. And if you take that and divide it out, that's probably anywhere from a $60,000 to an $80,000 project, and put your alternates as Q, R, and N, and see what the bids come back at. After the bids come back, then as a board, you decide, we want to accept the main bid, and then we want to accept any alternate, if you want to.
You still have no idea if you just do your two main bids, if that's where the water's actually leaking in.
Right, and that's the only problem we have with it.
So, we could spend $80,000.
And it still might not fix it.
And still leak come August or September.
Correct.
And then need to rebid it because these bids will have been outdated.
Correct.
And start the process all over.
At least you'll still have two good roofs, but it still might not take care of the pro, the problem.
See, and I'll go back to January, February, March of 14, when we were talking the Purple Plan. I thought you guys were crazy when you put that roof on the high school gym. Because I just thought that was a crazy thing at the crazy time.
At that time though.
Well, I understand, but I mean, as things change throughout the community, perceptions change, opinions change, plans change.
That's right. Well, we need to all talk about it together, because at that, at that point, what it was, it was taking down all the circles and the new high school, middle school would be built within the three circles, and that's what.
And you were going to keep the 50-year-old monstrosity gym out front?
We were going to keep one.
Which we probably still are.
We were going to keep one gym, we were going to build a new competition gym, and yes, that cafeteria could have been used, and that was part of the plan. So, I'm not opposed to it, but apparently I need to catch up.
Well, I see where you're, I understand what you're saying, though, I think, because we haven't had this discussion at the board table, and by putting $230,000 into this roof on here, it's like we're saying, we're going to keep it, because even though it's $230,000, it might take three years. We all know public perception, we know what the public's going to say if we come up now with, with an alternative plan that says, "Let's take this down, that's part of the bond."
Yeah.
And, so we need to weigh that.
Right.
And not that that's a wrong thing to keep this, but we need to just get us, like you said, get us all thinking that direction and.
Let's go through the steps that we did in determining what the right thing for the middle school was and figure out what the right thing for the high school is as well, and whether that's doing the, the Clio with BLDD and what all that. But apparently, we, we better get started on it.
See, and to me, after we were done with our FEH design, I think the why needs to come to the high school property. I think they might and should. I believe that they'll continue to use the gym and cafeteria once we have Phase 2, because I think it'll all fit into a plan for them.
Your crystal ball's way clearer than mine.
Yeah. But that's just my opinion.
See, I don't really know.
It's not a bad reason or something, because I don't see it.
I don't either.
That's just my opinion.
Not clear enough for us to base our decisions.
No.
On that. And with everything that we do, we need to base our decisions on fact and what we have at hand. And particularly with this Phase 2, I think we need to do that.
So, the fact on hand is the roof leaks.
Yep.
Well, the other fact is, is that the results of that survey was roughly a third of the people thought that that why needs to remain downtown, a third thinks it needs to be up at the high school, and a third don't care or don't know. And so, I don't know that that's a clear mandate from the public that it needs to be at the high school.
And it's no different than the polls right now predicting who's the head for president.
But here's, here's, here's what I want to suggest, is look into it, back into it from another way. And let's say, whatever happens, it ain't going to happen within the next two or three years. So, you take this $230,000 and divide it by the three years, you've got $80,000 a year. So, let's do it all now. Back into it from the other direction, instead of saying, well, we're going to do $80,000 worth now, and then maybe that'll fix it, maybe it won't, next year we're going to spend another. Let's do it now and prorate it over the next three years, or four, or maybe five it might take. But at least we'll get our money's worth back out of it then, if we prorate it into $100,000 a year.
Then, the way I look at it, from a facilities director's side of it, any money we put into a facility, whether it's going to be here for two years, five years, 10 years, or whatever, you're not throwing it away as long as you're maintaining and keeping your facilities in good shape.
I agree with you.
And you, you have to maintain them and keep them in good shape. And if 200, 180, if you, if we don't take on the N1 or 230, if we take that one on too, we're still making the facilities better and in better shape, and we're maintaining them. And if that's the cost of maintaining it.
Possibility the bids that come in less than this $230,000 we're projecting.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, then that even makes it better to divide it.
Absolutely. And, and the problem is, if we delay it, the longer we delay it, we definitely won't get our best pricing. Because that's why we were sort of pushing through the timeframe we put through, because if, if, I don't know if that's in there, the, our timeframe of when everything would be that Gary and I put together. If we maintain that timeframe, it should be our best pricing for next summer.
And also, you'll have further structure damage if you keep.
Correct, absolutely, absolutely.
So, are we ready, ready for a motion?
Yes, if we can, as Jerry suggested, you know, do some alternative bids for sections.
How are the bid specs now, Jerry? Is it, I know we have them, I think, here, is it a, what are the, what's listed, is it considered as alternatives, or is it?
For just then.
Just then.
And let me pull back out here, OPQR are in the base bid, and then N is an alternate. That's the way it should be. So, if we can walk through those, I can walk you right down to the high school. R is right at the front entrance when you come in, Q would be the next section, P, O, N would be the section just past the, the gym, that would go out towards the weight room and, and back towards the new middle school. So, that would be the farthest there, it would stop approximately the wood shop. That area right there is where it would be, okay?
Well, currently, this agenda item is only for the total budget for summer projects. As far as details of what we would bid out, that's coming up in Agenda Item 10. Am I correct?
Right.
So, this is just total project budget for Agenda Item 7. If we decide, once we get to Agenda Item 10, to alternate, and then once we have our public hearing in January, and actually assign contracts, set contracts for that work, we have leftover money, because we're not at the $230,000 mark. Buildings and grounds, in my opinion, would come back with more alternates or projects to do. That make sense?
Makes sense.
Or funnel the money into the transportation center.
Or funnel the money into transportation center or something.
Okay.
I mean, they're different, they're all interrelated, but they're different agenda items at the moment.
Can I make one last comment as to Phase 2 before we go to the motion? I wonder if this isn't a nice, an indicator to us that maybe we should be starting to take, as Lorraine had stated, we possibly need to bring that back to the table now, because how many other things are going to come up that are going to be possibly interrelated, that we're going to need to spend money on, that may be hinged to where we place Phase 2? So, I'd like to have that.
Yet the bus barn, perhaps.
Come again. I'll make a motion to approve the 2016 Summer Facility Project List as recommended.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the 2016 Summer Facility Project List as recommended. Any further comments or discussion by board members?
Well, now, is it the project list or the project budget? Because it says, "Replace roof above high school cafeteria."
Currently, that's approving of.
Is it the list or the budget? It's, it's the list of projects, you're, you're voting.
That includes the budget. The details of which sections that we do on that roof will come in Agenda Item 10.
Okay.
So, we can break down the totals if, if it, if Agenda Item doesn't, 10 doesn't pass as recommended, we can make adjustments.
Okay.
Just trying to keep things moving and everybody understand how it works, how I perceive that it's working.
Right on.
Any other discussion or questions? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
Maycomber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes, motion carried five to zero. Agenda Item 8 is Scott and Anderson Architects.
So, due to the size of the project, we're required to have an architect engineer drop the plans. Jerry's been working with Gary Scott from Scott and Anderson on the preliminary work, and the fee is an hourly rate plus reimbursed expenses not to exceed $6,000.
Motion to approve the Architectural Services Agreement with Scott and Anderson Architects for the work on the high school cafeteria re-roof project as recommended.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Agenda Item 8 as recommended. Any further questions or comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote.
Frisbee?
Yes.
Maycomber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes, motion carried five to zero. Agenda Item 9, Middle School Addition Change Orders. I take it this has also gone through Buildings and Grounds?
I think we've talked about the, some of this, of course, especially the elevator backup.
What are they putting in for backup, and what, what are they talking about for a backup for the elevator system?
Probably a battery system.
Some other way of running it if the power goes out or something.
Yeah, just returns it to the main floor.
Okay.
Just a batter, large battery backup, I'm guessing, because of.
Get the battery charger up, but you don't power it.
Well, Jerry's here and he can stick to it, because he, Jerry did that.
Are you familiar with that, Jerry?
So, what it is, if, if.
Someone's in the elevator and you're going up the second or third, second or third stop, you lose power, you're in the elevator without the battery backup. So, we did discuss it the last meeting, Scott from Estes was there, sort of described it a little more to us. What that does, it returns it to the floor, that either the first floor, or if you're above the second stop, it returns you to that stop, so you can always get out of the elevator. Otherwise, you could be stuck in there.
So, if the building were to lose power, or power would go out to that part of the building, the battery backup would automatically take us down to. A level that we could get out safely. And not be stuck there for several hours.
Correct, that's exactly what it is, exactly what it sounds like.
I wondered, because I just, I thought maybe he was talking about some way of, if the elevator wasn't working, to get up and down the steps, but this here, I see what you're.
Your questions on maintenance and, and battery life and that were all answered, I assume?
Yep, they're all answered on that. It, it wasn't that bad a cost, really, for maintenance upkeep, so.
And.
I would strongly recommend it, in my opinion.
The First Avenue subgrade correction stuff was, will be reimbursed by the city.
By the city, yes.
Just to make that well-known. Just to make that well-known.
I'll make a motion to approve the middle school addition change orders.
Second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the middle school addition change orders, number 15 and 25 as presented. Any other questions or comments by board members? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote.
Maycomber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisby?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes. Motion carried five to zero. Agenda Item 10 is to set the date and time for public hearing on the proposed plans, specifications, and contract form for the high school roof project. Now we can decide on how many sections we're going to do, I guess, and how that's set up.
So Jerry, your recommendation was maybe look at, what, three separate bids? One is two sections, one is four sections, and one is all of the, essentially?
Correct, right. What, if you don't want to put it all together like what we have it for four sections in one, my least likely one that I'd like to do, but it's something that we could do, two sections and then have alternates for the next three. So that's, that's, I guess, my least likely one to do.
Excuse me. Could possibly be some cost savings if you do it all at one time, too?
Correct, that's why we...
Stop and start and...
Correct. It is, because when someone gets here, the bigger project you have, they're going to get your best pricing.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And if we could, we could still go that route, and then, you know, that would essentially give us time to continue this conversation until January 11th, when the bids are awarded.
Correct. Now, do I feel the two sections might take care of it? I think it's a good chance it'll take care of the leak, but I'd hate to guarantee that, so.
And which were your two priority?
What, the two?
Yeah, the two priority ones.
I think it was O and P.
O and P, yeah.
O and P, yep. And then Q, R, and N could be alternates, if, if you wanted to go that route.
I wouldn't be opposed if we just approved it as presented, but I'm only one of five.
I'll make a motion that we have accrued bids on, on three projects, O and, the first two, and then the next three, and then a total. Get bids on all three.
I don't think there's any harm done in that. And it gives us still the opportunity
to pull the all of the, whatever. We can't do nothing, obviously.
Yeah, we need, we have to do something. Yeah, we have to.
That would give us a little time.
A little bit of time.
Get some more answers.
Give us more time to look at other.
Yeah.
We should have, we're going to be getting things underway, so we can get a bid lead if we...
Correct, so we can get, so we can definitely get our best pricing.
Get on the list for what we're...
So we have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to, eh, set the time and date for the public hearing, and do the bids as stated by Mr. Frisby. Right?
Do you want to restate that?
Yeah, would you restate that for us?
That would be for sections O and P as the base bid, and Q, R, and N as alternate.
And third would be all the total package. Any further discussion from the board? Any comments or questions from the public? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote, please.
Wintering?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisby?
Yes.
Maycomber?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes. Motion carried five to zero. Agenda Item 11, Early Retirement Policy Discussion. This is you leading the discussion.
This is me leading the discussion. So we have two big unknowns. Supplemental State Aid, and what that percentage is going to be, and the settlement amount with the associations next spring. The supplemental State Aid amount, a year ago, the governor had been pushing for 2.45 percent. All indications are that we'll be lucky if the government, governor recommends 1 percent when we get to the second day of the session in January. So 0 to 1 percent in all likelihood is where that's going to end up. We would need an excess of 2 percent even to see an increase in new money, because we lost another 11 students this year. So we're on the budget guarantee again. The amount of incoming money versus the increases from the state, and the, again, the unknown of the settlement, there's a gap there. So we will be in another trimming mode when it comes to the spring. What I need to understand from the board, and maybe you refer this to the finance committee, or maybe you just talked out loud today, is would you like to see early retirement offered again this year? Two years ago, I said, okay, let's do this, but it shouldn't, shouldn't be an every-year thing like it had been. Last year, with the loss of 47 students, we went ahead and offered it again, and said, but we're not going to offer it.
Every year.
Every year. So this is where we're at, and this is kind of the leadoff of the budget discussion. We need to look at operational sharing incentives. We need to look at ways that we can all contribute. You know, if we all cut a little bit when it comes to teachers, support staff, administrators, everything, we can get through this. Or we, we have to come back with bigger cuts. But it starts with, should there be an early retirement policy? So either your thoughts, or would you like to refer this to one of, like, finance committee, for example?
We're really put in a hard spot with this, without being given our supplemental aid amounts when we need them. We want to make statements like we made that we want, because we do make them genuinely. But then, when our hands, we've lost the control, and now we're left with ways to come up with the most non-disruptive, and the early retirement is definitely one of those things that I feel strongly about, that falls into that category of, of a lot of help can be gotten there without cutting actual positions. So even though we said no, we might have to say, well, no, not again this year, but it's obviously the capital building that's deciding that for sure for us.
Would, would, the question I want to ask is, okay, you know, that's a possibility that's going to happen, but would, you know, till we know what the state's going to do, which could be the first, second day of the session, you know, it could be.
From the lieutenant governor's mouth?
Yeah.
Like, almost, I swear, you're going to know on the second day of the session. So we'll, we'll take her at that word.
And so, does this decision that we're actually going to do it need to be made now, or are you looking for a recommendation from us to start looking, putting the figures together, so you can give us some figures as what it would look like if we do?
If you're going to do it, we need to make the decision December 14th at our next board meeting, so that staff have time before January 30th to contact IPR's representatives and start going through all of their own financial planning to make sure, is this the right move for them, so they have ample time. We can't just give them a two-week timeframe, for example. And we would prefer to have that January 30th date, so that we'll know, and then we can continue with the budget discussions as to what are the other areas to, to find ways to save money, or to generate new revenue, before we get to April 15th.
So I was thinking, last year, we didn't announce to the staff that we were going to offer it till later in the season, did we?
That was the support staff.
Two, the support staff was in March.
Yeah, last year was actually in December, that you approved the early retirement for the teachers. Now, you may be thinking about support staff, which we talked about afterward.
Much later.
I wouldn't be opposed to an early retirement, but I would like to hear and talk with our administrators about some of that, too, before forming a, an opin, you know, an opinion, for sure.
I have a couple of questions. How many year, out of all of the years you've been here, Mrs. O'Brien, as business manager, how many years has the district not offered an early retirement? Once or twice, potentially?
I'm going to say once.
Oh, really?
The year before I came.
Yeah.
Yeah, because all of the, I was on the board when, we hired Mrs. O'Brien originally back in the 90s, and every year, we had the conversation for 12 years. We don't guarantee this every year, and every year, we offered it. You know, and we're now 23 years later, and in all those years, it's not been offered once.
I think a...
Well, then, let's do it.
I think a more appropriate statement, you know, two years ago, not necessarily that we'll, you know, we're not going to offer this every year, it's, it's that this will be offered when it's at the, in the best interest of the district.
Yes, that's more appropriate.
If we're sitting here, and we, this year, had a 25-student increase, and we're flush with money, then I probably wouldn't support it, you know. We've, you know, it was offered last year, like we said. We, we harped for two years at, hey, whatever, but it's in the district's best interest again. And hopefully, next year, it's not. Hopefully, the year after, it's not. But it is, again, this year, unfortunately.
The finance committee has a meeting scheduled for December 3rd in the morning, already, if you wanted it to go that route.
I would, you've heard, I wanted to voice my opinion, because I think then I would like to turn it over to that committee. You've heard now from the rest of us, I'm comfortable with going ahead and taking it to the finance.
Hey, Dr. Cox, are you up for a good joke? If we cut your payback to what the lady from Argentina makes, you will go after.
If the economy was as bad here as there, he'd still have two other jobs, like she does, to live.
I think, you know, the, one of the final deciding factors for me, too, is somewhat of what is the number, you know? What is, what is our number to cut? Can we easily absorb it through other things, which I'm getting the hints, that's probably a no.
No, is the answer to that.
Yeah.
I think we just have to assume the worst, that we're going to get anything, and then go from there, and then have Dr. Cox run figures from that.
My worst fear continues to be, we'll have our budget certified at zero by April 15th, and the legislature will vote on something May 10th, you know, whatever they vote on. Because at the rate that they don't get things done in Des Moines, they will go past their deadline. That is my fear.
My, my other, you know, a little bit out loud speaking thought here, too, is, it may also give us another opportunity to be creative as we move forward into the new facility with structuring of our, some of the positions that, if we have some, if some openings come of it, then there may be an opportunity to be flexible with some of that, too. So I...
I think we should look into it, though, see what...
Okay, since this isn't an action item, we'll just refer it to the finance committee when they meet on December 3rd.
Okay.
Agenda Item 12, thank you for waiting for two hours for us to get to your part again. I think you spoke about two hours ago now.
Thank you.
So Rob is here tonight. I mentioned to him that if we're taking Charles City students and advertising in Charles City classrooms, and it's, everything is taking place on our school time and property, that even though previous superintendents had indicated, no, it's not a school-affiliated trip, there's nothing that would prevent that from being declared totally void in a court of law, because it is only Charles City teachers and students going on our time, et cetera. So he's here, he's filled out the paperwork for a trip in 2017, and he's also here to talk about a fundraiser that is part of that trip, and it is to Costa Rica. So, Rob?
So can you give us the two-minute rundown?
Yeah. Absolutely. This will be the fifth trip that I've taken with Charles City kids. What I'd like to give you guys an idea of, if one of these students goes on any of the trips that I've done, and then comes back, because I usually take juniors and seniors, and they have that time to go to, like, some kind of our version of Iowa Big, it gives them even more of a background to grow and to go, to go from there. Our vision statement, I think, so falls in line with the idea of opening up travel opportunities to more and more of our students. You know, and then in the same light, how do we advertise our school? You know, how do we get more students to keep coming in? The more of these things that we can do, the better. So this trip is to Costa Rica, and it's basically a way to give them a lot of great experiences, introduce them to some very specific cultural aspects of Latin America and Central America, and then also to have some fun, put them in different situations that are the real-world kind of things to learn and improve and grow on. The fundraiser that we like to do is dealing with the Butterbraids, which is out of West Bend, Iowa, which is, I like doing that one, because it's a great Iowa thing, and even one of the parents there, like, that, that factory's in our hometown where they grew up. You know, so I really enjoy, I've always enjoyed doing that one. And, you know, I've never lost a kid, I've had ten to eleven tornings on my trip. I, you know, now, over the years, I've had several, several parents say, oh, my kid's in college, or they've now graduated college, and they're looking at, they do international business, they study. I have one of my former students on travel, who is actually doing the cruise around the world for a semester, and he said, I'm doing this because, you know, Mr. Piment took me on a trip, too. That kid was Florence, Italy, and Rome. You know, so things like that. Opens up the world of the mini-business for our students.
Will this trip all take place during the spring break period, or will there be a couple of school days?
There will be either one day on either side, so it'll be two days that they'll usually miss.
Yeah, these are opportunities that were few and far between, and never happened when I was in school, and to look back, it's like, boy, they, kids get all these, you know, great opportunities, and it's, it's excellent.
We want to be like Lorraine, and go back and do high school over again.
You're younger than I am, Jason, we're in Floyd County, you're one of us.
If you're growing up down Highway 30 in State Center, you could have gone with me, because I took kids to Costa Rica twice, and Spain twice, and they're, they're eye-opening experiences for students.
And I know this is extra on your part, having to sit through a two-hour board meeting to get to your presentation.
That must be very important, it's no problem.
But we appreciate you, and it is beneficial for us, too, as a board, to hear what the opportunities, and to get the word out on our avenues of the wonderful things that are happening here in Charles City, with the addition of you coming to tell us about it.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Ready for a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Costa Rica trip and the proposed fundraiser.
Now second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the 2017 Costa Rica trip and the proposed fundraiser. Any further questions or comments from board members? Any questions or comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisby?
Yes.
Maycomber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes. Motion carried five to zero.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
And enjoy. Agenda Item 13, Important Upcoming Dates.
Trimester one ends tomorrow. We've got Thanksgiving break for students, starting on Wednesday. All-day professional learning for teachers again on Wednesday. And second trimester is going to start up on November 30th, next board meeting on the 14th of December.
I had a question on the, this isn't an action item, but something to think about and get back. We have our board meeting at 6:30 on December 14th, and at 7:30 is a band and orchestra concert next door in the auditorium. If you're interested in potentially moving our board meeting up by 30 minutes, could you get back to Dr. Cox on that, please?
Yeah.
Well, it's not, no, it's not an action item.
Just let me know.
We just may, make an administrative decision to move it up if, if no one objects.
It's fine.
No, I'm just talking about this one at this present time. No other business before the board, we will adjourn.